A family-owned shop in Loganville, Sosby's Garage for all your automotive repair needs. We service all makes and models, foreign and domestic. We repair engines, alternators, brakes, alignments, AC systems, and more. Using certified technicians with over 90 years of combined experience. We also offer same-day service for some repairs. Sosby's Garage, 200 Bay Creek Road in Loganville. Dependable, honest, and fair. Look us up on Google or Facebook. We'll take good care of you.
Broadcasting live from the Subaru of Gwinnett studio inside the Sonesta Gwinnett Place Atlanta Hotel, it's time for Case in Point presented by Paradigm Security Services. We are the cornerstone of security in the southeast.
Welcome everyone to Case in Point presented by Paradigm Security Services and brought to you in part by Sosby's Garage. Give John Sosby a call out there in Loganville. He can take care of all your pains and aches with your car. You will not find a more honest mechanic, no matter how hard you try. Well, again, I'm your host, Rick Strawn, President of Paradigm Security Services. And we are excited to be with you today on Business Radio X. We are coming to you from the Subaru of Gwinnett studio located in the beautiful Sonesta Gwinnett Place Atlanta Hotel in Duluth, Georgia. Each week we plan to feature businesses in the Atlanta area, especially those that serve Gwinnett County and the people within Gwinnett County. While all businesses have security concerns, not all are about physical security. And we will touch on that and all related aspects of security in one way or the other through the course of each show. Our guest today, I am very glad to have, Mr. Jace Brooks. And for those of you that don't know, in Gwinnett County, which I find it hard to believe that you don't, he is the County Commissioner, District One, with one hat and the other hat, he's Business Manager and Consultant for Table Group Consulting. Glad to have you here, Jace.
Great to be here, Rick.
I've been wanting to get you here for a while.
Yeah, it's great to be here, although we're here during interesting times, aren't we?
Yeah, we are through the flag of COVID-19.
That's right. I think there's an ancient Chinese curse, "May you live in interesting times."
There is, actually.
We are living in interesting times.
Yeah, there's times that three, four months from now, we'll look back and say, wow, did we really do all that crap? Or did we really not do all that crap?
That's right.
So, yeah, it is interesting. We're not going to spend a whole bunch of time talking about the virus because I know you both, you and I both, are about fed up with the virus. It seems like everywhere you turn, whether it be the radio or the TV or anything else, that's all people talk about.
That's right. You can't get away from it. So, why don't we spend some time getting away from it?
Sounds good. Well, one of the things, businessman, I know what you do as County Commissioner. Why don't you talk a little bit, because you've been that since 2012. You're not running this time again to repeat, which personally, I'm sorry to hear.
Thank you.
But I know that you've created and implemented policy and decisions for the, I mean, Gwinnett's the second largest county in Georgia, with a million residents, 4,800 county employees, and a $1.8 million budget.
1.8 billion.
Billion, excuse me. You're right. That's million with a B. You use consulting, sales skills, relationships with collaboration to build consensus and coalitions all the way through. And, you know, that's a perfect fit for what you do as a business. It's basically a management and consulting business when you're doing county commission work. You've got to have all those interactions. You've got to be able to mediate. You've got to be able to consult. So, why don't you describe a little bit about that and then we'll transition over and kind of talk about some other stuff.
Absolutely. So, yeah, the county government's responsible for the county government services. Things that you want to go well, things like water and sewer. You want that toilet to flush and go somewhere.
And you don't want to be drinking what flushes.
That's right. And you want that water to turn on whenever you turn on that shower or that faucet. Police, of course, all the entire public safety, everything from police and fire and EMS to the court system, district attorney. All of that falls under our area of responsibility, at least from a budget standpoint. Roads, traffic, transit, all of that's a part of it. Planning, residential development, commercial development, economic development. All of that's a part of what we do there at the county. And thankfully, like you said, there's a lot of collaboration that goes on. We have just amazing partners that we work with. Right now, we're sitting right in the middle of the Gwinnett Place CID. So, we have a number of CIDs, Commercial Improvement Districts, that we partner with. And they do an absolutely phenomenal job of kind of honing in on a specific area. Of course, we have our 16 cities and I love our cities. I was on city council for 10 years in Swanee. And so, I love working with them. And in my area, it's predominantly Swanee, Sugar Hill, and Duluth. So, you know, just some fantastic cities to work with. And then we have a lot of nonprofits that we work with to kind of address some of the community issues that we're dealing with in a county of a million people.
Well, you're the public on the public-private partnerships when you're with the government part of it. And that was one of the things I was going to mention was the CIDs. I personally have been there since we do security for a couple of the CIDs, Gwinnett Place, as well as Gateway 85. And I noticed that, you know, when you're there in those meetings and around with the stuff that goes on in the meetings, you're, you and the county government, you know, when I say you, I mean the county government, you're a big part of it. And there's a lot of collaboration that goes on and a lot of help that the public really does. I mean, the private sector, the public part of it, really doesn't understand or know how much y'all do. And it's not taxpayer money that's doing it.
That's right. That's an excellent point. So, in those districts, it's the businesses that self-tax themselves and provide things. So, I'll say thank you for the work that you and your team do from a security standpoint. That's really one of the major things that does happen in those CIDs is providing that extra level of security for those businesses and for the people that visit those businesses as well. And other things, landscaping. We do a lot of work partnering with the CIDs from transportation standpoint. So, it could be roads, it could be sidewalks, lots of pedestrian and bike type of infrastructure that we partner with them on, lighting as well.
The beautiful floor around the expressway intersections that you see, that's CID stuff.
That is CID stuff. One of the big things we're doing here, partnering with the CID here at Gwinnett Place right now is the, we're doing a roundabout. We're doing a roundabout right there at Venture Drive and Pleasant Hill. And that'll really help the traffic congestion that happens right there.
It's going to be an interesting intersection.
It will be. Be a little bit of education that'll have to go on, but it'll help.
It'll be even more education than the Diverging Diamond, I venture to say, from looking at it from a cop's perspective.
That's right.
Well, you know, politics, I guess this is the year when everybody's in politics. I was watching some of the returns last night. Amazing how things flip like a coin. What do you see going on with the politics this year? And I know, I guess the thing that bothers me the most is regardless of whether you're conservative or liberal, Republican or Democrat, it just seems like everybody is at each other's throat.
Right.
And there's, they don't, they're not getting any, you know, I will say this, you know, and I'll throw my bias a little bit. Trump has gotten a lot of stuff done.
Right.
But it just seems like there's nothing coming out of the house. It just seems like because of the conflict, nothing gets done.
That's so true. And it's, it is disappointing. I think you see it more so at the federal level.
Exactly.
Immense divisiveness, so much so that not much gets done. Maybe that's a good thing.
Yeah, really.
But sometimes we do need them to get, we do need them to get some things done. And right now, this crisis, they are working together a little bit better. And we'll see if that can continue. There's some of that certainly at the state level, too. Thankfully, at the local level, you don't see the divisiveness as much.
Exactly.
Particularly at the county and at the city level. You know, one thing I would love to see, the cities run nonpartisan. You know, I wish that.
That would be great.
I wish at the county level, you know, we could do that as well. It's not going to happen anytime soon. But most of what we do at the local level doesn't really have a partisan bent to it. There's certainly some ways that you govern that are different. I govern from a rather conservative standpoint, particularly fiscally and economically. But all, you know, overall, it's not really, it shouldn't be that partisan at the local level. But you ask kind of what I see going on.
Yep.
I feel like there's probably a good bit of change that will happen this year. County Commissioner-wise, we have two new commissioners that came on board. So, they've been there a little over a year. And then the three of us that have been there for eight-plus years, none of us are running for reelection. So, you will certainly have some change there. And like you said, kind of taking the politics side of it out, that will mean that everyone on the Board of Commissioners will have two years or less of experience. And my guess is you'll probably see some change at the staff level as well. We have a lot of incredible leaders that are at that retirement age. And they may go ahead and start taking advantage of that opportunity from a personal level. So, that level of change, again, kind of forgetting about the politics side of it, is concerning. It's a, so.
Well, I would hope that they would at least, the staff, some of that staff, because there's some awfully good staff that's been supporting these people that are commissioners and chairman as well. And I would like to see some of that staff hopefully stay along and help to give these new people some guidance. And there again, it's whether it's conservative, whether it's Republican or Democrat, that guidance is going to have to be there because you don't want to make any changes, drastic changes. That whole idea of coming in, there's a new sheriff in town, which we're going to have, too.
We will have a new sheriff.
But that idea, it's got to kind of take a backseat.
That's true. So, you know, there are some certain things that are just the Gwinnett way of doing things. We strive for excellence at everything that we do. We're fiscally responsible. We've had the triple AAA bond rating for dozens of years now. And that saves our county and our taxpayers.
A lot of money.
A lot of money. We're talking billions of dollars. So, that, hopefully, those that come aboard will continue that type of leadership there at the county level. And yes, hopefully, some of the staff, I know some of the staff will certainly stay. So, it won't be a vast exodus. But you will, you probably will see.
You'll see a change. Yeah, it's just, you know, there's going to be a lot of changes in Gwinnett over the next few years. And I'm not talking about changing from red to blue or any of that kind of stuff. I'm just talking about, there's a lot of growth going on. There's a lot of stuff going on with, well, transit. There's a tremendous amount going on with transit. And there's got to be changes there regardless of the color of your party. It's for the people. And there's a need, there's a desire, like it or not, for some of the older Gwinnett people that don't want to change, which has been always the way with Gwinnett. This is the way it's always been. Why should we change? Because times are changing.
Right.
So, what do you think about the transit stuff? Where are we going there?
Right. Well, thank you for that question. I appreciate it. So, we'll actually be meeting next week, probably at a distance. But we will be meeting next week and starting to really hone in and focus in on what exactly the plan will be and what that will look like. If I had to guess right now, my educated guess is that we will have something on the ballot in November. I'm not sure which funding mechanism that we will choose. There's an option to go with MARTA, which would be a penny sales tax. And there's an option to go with what's called the ATL. That would also be a penny sales tax. So, from a funding standpoint, we do have those options. But I think you're right. It seems like there is a desire, if you look at the county as a whole, I would say it's 60% plus, that would like to have transit as an option. And that's how I view it. We need as many transportation options as possible. Transit is one that we just don't have, is not flourishing in Gwinnett County right now.
Right now, your option is to get a car or walk or take a bike.
Right, right.
And hope you don't have to go too far if you're on the bike or walking. But, you know, or hooking up through Gwinnett Transit and hooking up to MARTA. And sometimes that's kind of a pain.
It can be. And so, you see, like the express buses. So, you see that those are extremely, do an extremely great job. It is welcomed. They are limited, right? But I think it does show that if you're going to the right spot and if it's reliable, then people will choose the transit option because it does have some benefits. You get to relax a little bit. You might be able to get some work done, some studying done.
Some sleep done.
Some sleep.
One eye open.
That's right. Exactly, exactly. But much less frustration, right?
Absolutely. You're not sitting there wanting to kill somebody in the next car or them wanting to kill you.
That's right.
Yeah, but, you know, the transportation has been a big thing for several years, several cycles here. And it was kind of a hit and miss last year and it missed. And there was a lot of complaints about being MARTA. I was one of the people that, I come from working in Atlanta for a lot of time. I saw MARTA when it was digging the tunnels and back in the 70s and all that kind of stuff. So, I followed along and, you know, the management from, in the old days, was just so mismanaged. It was terrible. And I was one of the people that was so much against for so long, against doing anything and hooking up with MARTA. But I saw a lot of changes on that last proposal that gave it, Gwinnett, so much more authority that I kind of switched my position and was, I was for the transportation issue. Unfortunately, I wasn't on the winning side. But then that happens every once in a while. But, you know, we're coming up again. It's going to be interesting to see. I know Charlotte's been working like crazy on it. I know all of y'all have, to try to work something and pound something out that is good for our county and good for the people in it.
Well, thank you. And we involved a Transit Review Committee this go-around as well. And it really took a lot of the input that we heard during the last vote and leading up to the last vote and after the last vote. And they incorporated some significant improvements. And so, I think that you will, everyone will see that. And the new plan, well, like I said, we'll hammer that out next week. But I think it will look largely like what the Transit Review Committee has suggested. And so, we had some holes there. So, they've done an excellent job of kind of making some improvements there.
Well, there was, despite what people think, there was public input on the last one. But it wasn't to the level of visibility, I think, that everybody needed to see. They felt like there wasn't a lot of transparency and totally get it. And this time, there has been a lot of public participation and outreach done by the committee and to find out, well, let's get this input that everybody wanted to do. And there's been a lot more of it on this one.
Right, right.
That's a positive.
I agree. There, it's been very positive. And again, are we looking at massive traffic congestion relief? No, I don't think that that.
Well, we're going to have massive traffic growth, so.
Right. A half a million people moving in over the next 20 to 30 years. And I think I heard something, a million more cars.
Yeah.
We've got to do something.
Absolutely.
That's a lot more cars on the road. And I don't think we can build enough roads to make the difference.
Not unless we're going to start stacking them.
That's right. That's right.
And that is an expensive, that's a lot more expensive than public transportation.
I think that it is. I think that it is. So, we just need to have an option for people that's very reliable and safe and that they can get downtown, they can get to the airport. That's a big one, getting to the airport. Or get around Gwinnett County as well and around this region.
I know a long time ago, quite a few years ago, I did a lot of intervention work with teenagers and went to the airport because I did a lot of traveling. And for a while, I actually drove to the Shambly Station and took MARTA in. But I'm also one of those people that I just, I hate not being able to just walk out, get in my car and go.
True.
And that's the way most people are, which is an attitude that, well, the millennials are changing a lot of that. They're, they're at, my son, took forever for him to particularly want to drive anywhere. He's 31 years old, I guess. And, you know, he didn't care whether he drives or not.
Right.
And he could get in, he could get in on a bus and go, I guess. But that's not an option here. So, he drives to work.
That's right.
So, he's gotten used to it. Now, he's getting older. Now, he's getting used to the, I like my car and drive it. But that would change a lot. The young people were brought up a lot more with public transportation.
That's true. My 18-year-old daughter would much prefer to not have to drive if she doesn't have to. That's her goal.
That was him.
Live somewhere where she can go to work without having to drive. And my son, they're twins, and he can't drive. So, his goal has been to save enough money so that he can get one of the, a Tesla one day that's fully autonomous. So, he can just drive up in his wheelchair and say, you know, go, drive to work or drive to the mall or whatever.
Tell him to go to Tiny Town and talk to Pierre, and he can get in there and start learning how to drive.
There you go.
And actually, they have a pretty good, pretty good system for the, for learning, for teaching for the older kids, for the older people. Well, you bring us right into a real, a real good thing because you were talking about can't drive, live, work, and play and all. And I know that a lot of what the county is looking at is the economic development locally. Big place, Gwinnett Place Mall.
Right.
So, I mean, that, we've been working on that, I feel like, for 20 years. And it really hasn't been. But where are we at with that? What's going on? And do, is, I know there are some changes going on and some change in place. Let's talk about them.
Right, yeah. I appreciate that. And it can be, there's a huge opportunity and sometimes it can be a little bit frustrating.
Right, yes.
All around them, all the, it seems to be thriving. There's certain spots that are still struggling a little bit, but there's some fantastic food restaurant options.
Oh, absolutely.
Around there, some entertainment options. There's a lot that's going well in the area. But the mall has been a struggle. So, in general, I think the biggest issue there, or complexity, I will say, is that the mall is owned by multiple owners. And I know that you've heard that, Rick, but some of the other folks aren't always fully aware of that, right? And so, the multiple ownership, along with all the cross leases and legal side of it, can be rather complex. And I think that that's why some developers have kind of avoided it.
Steered away from it.
That's right. You know, it's a big cost. It's a big risk. And then add on top of that, just working through the legal side of it is enough to kind of tip it to where no one has really wanted to engage with it.
Take the bull by the horns and go for it.
Exactly, exactly. So, even from a government standpoint, you know, we know the complexities of it as well. And, you know, the things that we would want to accomplish there, we need, we need full buy-in. But there are some positives. Up until recently, the mall really hasn't been officially for sale. And it is officially for sale right now. And that's the, when I say the mall at that point, that's just the part that's owned by Moonbeam, which is kind of everything but the main anchors, right? And then we had a fantastic company that purchased the old Sears. They're called Northwood Raven. And they have done some great developments over the past several years. They have enough money to make a difference. So, I'm glad that they are an owner and involved right there. So, I do, I do think that there are some things headed in the right direction now. It's still, it's still a struggle. I don't know if it'll have to continue to decline some more before something happens. I hope not. We do from a government standpoint, of course, you know, pay attention to what's going on there from health and safety issues. But I am high on optimism over the next, say, 18 months of what could potentially happen there at the Gwinnett Place Mall.
Well, that could be such a jewel for the county. I mean, it's right in the heart of the county. I mean, that's where the heartbeat is. It's basically center county.
That's right. Location, location, location.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, it doesn't get any better in there. You've got a lot of major roads crossing with Pleasant Hill and not to mention other roads. You've got 85 coming straight through the middle of it.
That's right. 316 right there.
Yeah, I mean, all the groundwork is laid. All you have to do is pick and choose how you want to reconfigure. Or hell, if you tore it down and rebuilt, you would still, the location is, you've got a new auto dealership coming in.
We do. It's a Fortune 500 company that's, that'll be coming in and kind of have their regional headquarters there. So, there are people around the periphery of the mall that are seeing fantastic opportunities. And just so you know, the county government has done some things over there. We've been working extensively from a stormwater standpoint, which is, which can be a major obstacle when it comes to redevelopment. We've also purchased land over there for transit. So, we've made that. And then we've done quite a bit from roads that, some of that I mentioned a little bit earlier, roads and sidewalks. McDaniel Farm Park is right over there, which is.
That place is awesome.
Absolute jewel, right?
Yes.
And we also have a plan. We're kind of waiting to see exactly what happens with the mall. But we do have a plan to make sure that that, that park is connected, fully connected to the rest of that Gwinnett Place Mall area as well. So, we, the county is doing a lot of things to kind of make sure that it is ready for a public-private partnership to happen there. And we do stand ready to partner with the right, with the right partner to make sure something positive happens there.
That place could be such an economic boon for the county that a lot of people just don't, a lot of people think old mall, it's just shot.
Right.
They don't think outside the box of what that place could be. And there are a lot of plans, that a lot of things have been drawn up, looked at it, different ideas. But some of the ideas with the live, work, play, community development through there, it's not, it's not the same old mall-type thought process. It's more of a community process. And it could be awesome.
Absolutely. And so, the location is phenomenal.
Yep.
It's probably not great for the amount of retail that was, that was there because that actual space is a little bit hidden from the main roads. And so, you're absolutely right. You need some mixed use to happen there. You need, you actually need some rooftops.
Absolutely.
That will keep things going 24 hours a day and not just 10 to 9.
That could be a 24, 24/7 type area.
Absolutely. So, we're waiting for the right partner there.
Well, I wish I had the money. I'd do it because somebody's going to make a lot of money on that.
Someone will. They'll have to take a risk. But again, from the government standpoint, we'll acknowledge that risk and see if there's some things that we can do to help, not eliminate it by any stretch, but help reduce or mitigate some of those things.
Well, I wish I was 20 years younger and had about 30 more million dollars.
Exactly, exactly.
But, you know, and along with community development, you've got a lot of initiatives coming up right now. We've got, a lot of people don't realize that we do really have a homeless issue to a certain extent in Gwinnett County. There's food issues. There's, you know, we got a lot, we got the best education system in the whole world.
We do, absolutely.
And so, you know, and there's a lot of nonprofit partners around. So, what are we doing and how are we looking on homeless and just that general idea, general area of subject?
Yeah, I appreciate that. That's a, kind of look at that from community development. So, we have, we, Gwinnett County's phenomenal. So, it, for me, it's the best place, I know I'm biased, but it's the best place in the world to live.
Well, I've lived other places and it is.
That's right. So, I absolutely love it. But there are some issues that we want to make sure that we go ahead and tackle before they become a significant problem. So, homelessness isn't, is it yet at a crisis point, right? So, but it is, but it has been increasing.
Yes.
So, and oddly enough, in this great economic time, up until the last week or two, it's actually made housing sort of difficult, particularly kind of entry-level housing. The nice side is property values have been going up, but it also creates that downside of some of the folks that would like to get into a home or.
Interest rates right now, you can't get better.
Interest rates are phenomenal. That's right.
Zero to .25, go for it.
But construction costs have been going up. And so, so there is, the homelessness has been going up a little bit. And so, we want to tackle that before it becomes a major issue. And my hat's off to Matt Elder.
Absolutely.
Home First and United Way. Primerica's also been partnering on that issue. So, our.
Gwinnett Coalition's working on it.
Absolutely. So, just tons of partners working there. The shelter, our first shelter should be opening, it was planned to open at the end of this month. And I hope that that, I know that it'll be ready. So, hopefully, the COVID thing doesn't delay that. But it'll be.
If it does, it'll be coming very soon.
It'll be coming very soon. And so, excited about that, that happening. Nice thing about Gwinnett is if we see an issue, we all work together to tackle it.
Absolutely.
Same thing from food insecurity issue. So, that oftentimes can be the first, the first contact that we have with someone that's experiencing a particular issue, whether it's a loss in job or whatever they may be experiencing, they have a food issue. And so, they will go to one of the co-ops or to a church. And so, we want to start capturing. And so we want to start capturing that information for one, making sure that we understand what, what's happened. What, why are you in need of this food? And I know right now, actually, the co-ops are being overrun with, with people that, that need food right now. So please go out, if you can, drop off some food to, to those co-ops. I often work with the North Gwinnett Co-op. There's also Norcross Co-op. And I'm not going to start mentioning all of them because I'm going to miss a bunch. There's quite a few. So we, we have folks, we actually, from a county standpoint, have set aside about $150,000 in the budget this year. Because some of our local partners are really focusing in on that particular issue this year. And we wanted to be able to partner with them and kind of maximize that opportunity there. From an education standpoint, you said it. I mean, we have the absolute best K through 12 education system, really, I think.
All the way through.
Right throughout this nation. And then you, you have UGA that's here and Philadelphia College of Osteopathic Medicine.
Gwinnett Tech.
Gwinnett Tech, Georgia Gwinnett College, which is where my son goes. Phenomenal system. Our issue is actually before they enter into that system. So before kindergarten, we need to make sure that these young children are ready to read predominantly. That's, that, that's one of the main issues, that they get their vocabulary up. And so we've been working on that issue as well. And again, just partner after partner coming in and working together on that issue. And then last is access to healthcare. So those are really kind of the four, four big issues that we're kind of tackling here from a county standpoint. And again, we have great partners. I'll, I'll give a shout out. Good Samaritan over in Norcross. And actually, they're expanding beyond that. But Greg Lang. And of course, our, our hospital system was Gwinnett Medical and now it's Northside.
Superior.
They, they do just an absolutely phenomenal job. So they're working on that healthcare access as well.
Well, I tell you, I could talk for you for another hour. We're at the end, but I do want to ask you one thing. Life after politics.
Right.
I know you are a consultant for the Table Group Consulting. What, what is that? What's Table Group Consulting?
So Table Group Consulting is a, a consulting group that is.
That's the name.
That's right. We work with an author. And his name is Patrick Lencioni. And so Pat has written a number of business books. Most of them have been bestsellers. In fact, he has one out, his latest one just came out a week or two ago called The Motive, and it's a bestseller as well. But one of his most well-known books is called The Five Dysfunctions of a Team. And so we do, we work with largely, it can be any size company. It winds up being largely medium to larger size companies. We work with their executive teams and help them around their team cohesion, their team effectiveness. We also do some work around their alignment. So some organizational clarity. A lot of people would think maybe strategic planning or mission, vision, values, team norms, team behaviors.
Culture.
Culture. So that's what we do. We go in and work with those companies around those particular issues. We also help them with their, with their meeting, kind of their meeting rhythm and meeting structure.
Well, if somebody wanted to get in touch with you, everybody knows how to get in touch with somebody with a county. You look it up on Google.
That's right.
But if somebody wanted to get in touch with you in the area of the consulting area and business management, how would they do that? Because I know somebody's going to want to do that.
Well, I appreciate that. Definitely, if you want to know more about what the Table Group does, go to tablegroup.com and you'll check out what they do there. And there's a consulting tab. And you can see what the, what we do from a consulting standpoint. And you can email me, jace.brooks@tablegroupconsulting.com.
Sounds good. Do you have a phone number?
I do.
That you want to give out?
I do not mind. My, my cell phone number is 678-472-0646.
That's fantastic. Listen, it has been a great conversation. A lot of stuff come off, you know, on the table here. We, you know, talked about a lot with the county. Like I said, hate to see you go. Glad to see you doing well in your consulting business. But you've been doing that since a long time ago. What was it? 2013?
Six or seven years now.
Yeah. So, you know, it's not something new. It's something you've been doing.
That's right.
Well, listen, I want to thank you for being here and thank you for joining us on Case in Point, presented by Paradigm Security Services. And partially brought to you and sponsored by Sosby's Garage, 200 Bay Creek Road in Loganville, Georgia, 678-825-2127. Give them a call. They will take excellent care of you. You can remember, remember to join us live on every Wednesday at 11:30 in the morning. Or you can listen to our show anytime you want by going to businessradiox.com, clicking on the Gwinnett Studio. And then of course, click on Case in Point. Join us next week at 11:30 when we will talk with business leaders about their businesses and related security issues in today's world. Thanks again to my guest, Jace Brooks.
Thank you.
Awesome council person and hell of a consultant from what I understand. And, you know, for our producer, Mike. And, and again, I'm Rick Strawn. And remember, at Paradigm Security Services, we cover more than just your assets.